Good evening. It is 6:30, Tuesday, March 8th, 2022. I call this meeting of the Northern Lebanon School District Board to order. Director England, would you lead us in a flag salute, please? Thank you. Mrs. Martin, may please have a roll call?
Yes. Buck's here. England.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Tuzinski.
Here.
Murray.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Marlowe.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Nam.
Here.
All members present.
Great, thank you. We'll move to item two of the agenda, which is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda is presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adopting the agenda, please indicate with yes or aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda is adopted for this evening. Move on to the presentations. First, I'd just like to note that the High School Students of the Month for March are Anna Klingler and Gabrielle Degler. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meetings, meeting of the Lions Club. The Middle School Student of the Month for March is Rachel Trup. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and she will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. Our Student Board Representative, Alex Selby. Alex, do you have a report?
So a bunch of members from the Student Council are going to the Region F Leadership Conference this Friday at the Red Lion High School, and we're also just planning spring events, including a talent show.
Great. Any questions for the student representative from the board? Great. Thank you for your report. I do need to take a step back. We will need to re-vote on the agenda since there were two items that had to be added. Dr. Messinger will speak about that.
Yeah, we had two, we had two change orders that came out after the initial public availability of the agenda. They were actually yesterday. And I'll talk briefly about them while, while we, they came in, we knew that there was going to be a change order. It's a soil issue, not nearly to the extent of the elementary school, but we got figures for it, and in order to not put us behind another month, we, we got that on the agenda. And then the second one is the bond resolution. We had a number that Leanne put on today for that second piece of the bond. That's what we talked about last week at the workshop when Mr. Remig was giving the projections and going through that. He shared that resolution. So that was added outside of the 24-hour window, so we need to actually bring that to light as a revised agenda and then vote on, on the revised agenda to make sure that we do that correctly.
Great, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. So with those two revisions, which are indicated on this agenda, is there a motion to adopt the revised agenda? Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries revised agenda is adopted. Thank you. We'll move on to item four, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Messinger?
Yeah, I have three things, and then I'm not going to skip over Ms. Martin this time like I did last month, but I just wanted to bring your attention to a couple of things. The first thing is the Future Ready Index came out with the public information last Friday. We are working on some reports with that. As suspected, the state averages dropped significantly. Frankly, our elementaries did, did okay. In a lot of cases, above the state average, proportionately, maybe even as good, or if not even a little better in some cases than in the past. Middle school scores, high school scores weren't good, and I can't say that that surprises me, being hybrid last year with kids coming two days a week and attending the other days virtually. But, you know, the information there, it's not, it's, schools aren't being held accountable for it right now, and, and it's not something that is going into any teacher evaluations, and the state decided to go ahead and test after not testing the prior year. And I think, you know, the results are pretty much what they expected in terms of where we are. So, you know, now it's, from there, it's, it's building, and so I anticipate, hopefully, we'll get the scores earlier next year, because here we are in March. But assuming, you know, we have them in the fall and we come back to you, and, you know, I, I hope to be able to say, hey, okay, so here's where, here's where the baseline was, and here's where we've gone from here. So you're going to get a little more information about that and some reports as we dissect it. We're working on some spreadsheets and graphs, but we'll get to that in, in the near future. The other two things, wanted to just make sure everybody knew, and if you get a chance, the musical is this week. I saw the preview that they did yesterday for the senior citizens, and really was, really did a nice job. What I saw, I'm excited about seeing the whole thing. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, come out and see the musical. And the other thing I wanted to just say is next month, we do anticipate a number of students joining us. We'd like to be, we'd like to recognize, you'll see actually on the agenda tonight under information, a student who is a National Merit Scholarship finalist, we want to recognize her, but we also have some kids that made district chorus, district, regional, state band, orchestra. So we're going to bring a lot of those students in. We have a wrestler still going right now. We have a bowler who won leagues. The wrestler may win states this week, very possibly. So some student things going on that we'd like to get them in. So April, we're going to bring a bunch of students in to, to see you and recognize. So we'll have that ready for you. Ms. Martin?
Hello. So when you're looking at the reports that went out, one of the things I wanted to highlight is that our federal revenue and state revenue is a little behind from where we were last year, and they are just overwhelmed with all the grant applications, so things are lagging there. I do believe that we will get all that money. I'm not worried about that. They did in February release some of our Title I and S or II money to us, so that is starting to roll in, so those reports should start to look, those percentages look a little bit better. As Gary said, we will be doing another bond to fund the elementary and fieldhouse projects in their entirety. And after you approve this, if we approve the bar and resolution tonight, we'll start working with the solicitor and Brad, and hopefully have that money in our district accounts by the end of May. Two other things that I've done this past month or two that I wanted to highlight for you was I met with Mets, which is our cafeteria outsourced company, and we are looking to be profitable this year in the cafeterias, which is in large and part to the fact that we have a lot of reimbursements coming in and the lunches are free to the students. They did struggle this year with a few things. For one, we were having trouble getting in supplies from USDA. So some of the things that happened with USDA was they had a truck driver shortage, and they also had growing pains with combining four of their distribution centers into one. So that just created a lag in us getting some of the products, and we had to change things up on the menus. Sometimes it was last minute, and sometimes we actually had to buy products from local stores. We, we thought a truck was coming in and it didn't show up, and so Rob was working really hard to try to meet all those demands, and we also hired eight new employees in our cafeterias this year. That is a lot. So he's been busy training staff. We were fully staffed for a month this year. And last week, we lost an employee, so we had that position posted, but it was a really joyous month to be fully staffed in the cafeteria. So one other thing I wanted to highlight for you is that à la carte prices, we need to increase those just because everything's going up. We can no longer sell granola bars for its, what, 50 cents or something? So we will be writing down all the price increases and bringing that to you next month for review. And we did touch on this a little bit last week, that the district, I know energy costs right now are a big concern for everybody, and I did want to let you know and remind you that 50% of our electricity pricing is hedged, and we did that in 2019 for five years, and it's at a very low price. So that is one thing that's kind of helping us out right now in our expenses, and also the health insurance is our other big expense this year that's kind of higher than what we experienced last year. It's still coming in within budgeting, our budget, but it's, last year, we had a really good healthcare year, and we're about $400,000 higher this year than what we were last year at this time. And just a reminder, if you have any questions on those reports anytime, feel free to shoot me an email, stop in. I'm happy to go over anything on those reports and review it with you in detail. Thanks.
Thank you, Leanne. And that's the end of our report.
Great, thank you, Dr. Messinger. Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, we'll move to item five, which is old businesses. Are there any old business for the good of the order? Hearing none, we'll move to item six, which is the public comment. Interested persons were asked to complete a written request to address the board prior to the public input session tonight. I understand that we do have one person for public comment. Is Mr. Vander Newt present? Would you like to give public comment? Please step up to the podium. When you step up there, if you would please give your full name, you'll be given four minutes to speak. I will interrupt you when there is 30 seconds left of your time.
Thank you. I'm going to do my best to stay as calm as possible. I assume we all have children, or the reason why we're here is for our children.
Could I just bother you real quick to say your full name?
My name is Phil Vander Newt.
Thank you, thank you.
Who's the solicitor or the attorney? Okay, if I can get a card afterward or contact information. I'm hoping not to go there. I'm retired military, and I'm all about the kids. I'm glad you still do the pledge of allegiance. God comes first, then family and everything else. The reason why I'm here tonight is it's ironic timing, and I'm here at the board because I have tried extensively. I voted for a lot of you for change. I'm glad new change is here. However, there's nothing worse. I don't want to go into politics about who's in charge of our country, but sometimes you have to take over from something prior, and we are all suffering from the moral ethical, whatever you want to call it, from Dr. Bell, and I need your help tonight. It's an emergency. My son, my wife just got home, had to go to urgent care. My son, from day one, has been assaulted under this roof in this school six times. Six times. And there is not a doggone thing that these principals and people can do because they're underneath the so-called handbook of Dr. Bell. But let me tell you something, looking at the age group, I knew if I could go back, if you and I could go back to school, and if we knew we couldn't be touched, can you imagine what type of like childhood we would have? But it's a different world we live in. There's no work ethic. There's no respect. We've got teachers that are getting mouthed at in class. And they, they know, if you, they know they cannot be touched. I wish we could bring corporal punishment back. Nobody wanted to see the principal in the paddle when I grew up, but things are different. And we should not be suffering. My son is trained. He is under my guidance from God not to do anything back. But after six times, we have to go see a doctor tonight. If he were to go, and I were to give him a green light to defend himself, he'd end up in jail because there'd be ambulance showing up. And he is taking a beating. They're taking my son's passiveness for weakness. And so I am begging all of you tonight to put a motion in front of you because I trust you. You have a superintendent, you have principals, you have people who are employed here, and they're here because you made it happen. But they're stuck behind this frickin' red tape. I need you to pass a motion tonight to grant these principals and administrators on a case-by-case basis, which means you trust them to do the right thing, because they're trying to do what they can, but this new handbook ain't going to come till next year. So how long can we go and keep getting physically assaulted? And live, you know what it's like? When he, my son sits in the corner and wants to just make it through class. He wants to survive. He doesn't want to learn. I'm asking for your help. Vote on something, because if not, you're leaving me no choice but to come after any way I can socially, legally. Thank you. So I, I don't know what the Robert's Rules of Order are here, but I need you tonight. Please, help me. You can pass a motion to give these people the guidance and the strength they need on a case-by-case basis, because when my, when that kid assaults my son, beats him up, comes back and sits next to him in class, you know what the whole class is doing? They're afraid of him too. He cannot be touched. What does that say to our children who can't even be safe under this roof and know that no, no one can touch him?
Mr. Vander Newt, your time has expired.
Is there any additional time that can be granted or exception?
No, I'm sorry, but we've heard your comments, and since you've raised some very important things and have made some accusations, we're certainly going to look into what you've raised.
I'm sorry, did you say accusations?
You've made some allegations that we, that we need to look into, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just 10 seconds more. I don't want to be upsetting, but there's different places where since we can't touch the children, citations can be given to the children as pain, because there's got to be something they fear, and it's happening in other schools and other districts, and it's a healthy alternative. So suggestions are on. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will move on to item seven, which is our items for board action. It should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. Items that will be voted on tonight will be voted on by voice vote. We'll move first to the consent agenda. Dr. Messinger?
Yeah, we went over that at committee meeting. We did make those two changes to board policies. We ask that you approve the consent agenda as presented.
Any questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to adopt items 8.1 through 8.9 as presented on the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to item nine, the discussion agenda. These are items for board action. Dr. Messinger?
Yeah, 9.1, we have two resignations. Just wanted to really thank both of them. One is Ms. Perez, who is going to be promoted to a business manager, and obviously, when you hire people, you want to train them to be in positions to move on if their hearts so desire. So we're very proud of her, wish her the best as she gets an opportunity to, to move up. And also Mr. Harryman, who was only with us for a year. He, he comes from New York. He's getting married, and his wife lives in, or his future wife lives in New York, New York, and very happy for him. I tried to convince him that his wife would want to relocate down to this area. She, he didn't go for that, but he did come and talk to me about his year here, and he had, he was a great addition for the time we had him. I wish him the best as he goes on to some other things. 9.2, we do have a classified substitute for you there. There are three trips that are listed, the regional band trip, the all-state band trip are coming up, and then the technology education teacher, Mr. Lingle, taking students to the state conference, which is also in April. And then the two change orders that we talked about, again, those are maximum amounts. The contingency fund, in case you're worried, wondering about that, is approximately $270,000. So we will be under that even if it hits the maximum, but we don't believe it will. Therefore, there's no increased cost to the project. I've also been told that those areas should be the only areas for the fieldhouse and concession stand. The only other area that potentially, and I'm not saying it is, but potentially they haven't dug into yet, is the, where the bleachers are. Those won't be replaced until after graduation. So we won't know that for sure until after then. And then the resolution for the general obligation bond that we talked about is 9.5.
Any discussion on any of these items?
I would just offer a point of clarification, because I know the, the bond issue on 9.5 was added recently, and just so the public is aware, this is simply giving the motion to the solicitor and your finance advisor to start preparing things. It's not official. The board hasn't approved it. It will come back to them with a more formal resolution, 15 pages of documentation, as well as a full presentation. So this is just the initiation of that process, and the public will have plenty of opportunity to provide additional comment if they want to. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Say. Good clarification. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then is there a motion to adopt agenda items 9.1 through 9.5? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. The discussion agenda is adopted. Moving on to items for information, which is item 10 on the agenda.
Yeah, under information, first of all, we had a couple of pianos. I actually think we might, maybe you know, we were looking at a third, maybe, maybe. Did we get that one or not? Do you know? Okay. We have at least two pianos that the England family has, has found for us that are in good shape, better shape than the ones we have. So thank you for those, for seeking those out and getting those donations. Also, one of the students that we'll get to meet next month, Rachel Swank is a finalist for the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Competition. We also have a student joining us from Messiah University that has to do 100 hours of counseling practicum for next fall, and then a graduate of ours will be doing a speech and language student will be joining us as well there, coming up.
Great, thank you. Any questions? And thank you, Director England, and your family for that donation as well. Appreciate it. Item 11, reports of representatives. Dr. Buck's, any discussion on change order committee beyond what was discussed this evening?
We had two change order meetings, one on February 14th, the other on February 28th. The first added approximately $6,400 in changes. The second, we actually came out a little bit on top with a deduction. There's, there were two change orders at the February 14th meeting, five at the February 28th meeting, but three of them were simply extensions due to the soil issues. But if you want to see any details on that, all of those change orders are on the district website.
Great, thank you. Good report. Career in Technology, Director Klein, any report?
Nothing to report this month.
Thank you. IU 13, Director Murray?
Just a brief report. We went over our budget at the last IU meeting. It was stimulating and exciting, as budget meetings always are. And of course, as always, things are looking really good with the IU, and they work really hard to provide the services that we have in a cost-effective way. So I'm always thankful for Gina Brilhard. She's the financial manager over there, and she does a fantastic job. So she did a good job presenting that, and tomorrow is, will be Dr. Barnhart's very last meeting at the IU. He is retiring. I'm, can't even express to you how sad I am that he's leaving. He will be greatly missed, but of course, he is leaving the IU in good hands, and Matt Stem will be continuing the leadership there. So I look forward to working with him.
Great, thank you.
My report, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good report. Appreciate it. Moving on to the Legislative Liaison Director, Kimbal Tuzinski, anything to report?
Nothing at this time, but I will have a little bit next month.
Great, thank you. And PSBA Liaison, Dr. Buck's?
Just a couple upcoming dates and opportunities for engagement. March 15th, it's a Tuesday, is the monthly All-School Directors Exchange. I've attended a few of these in the past. They start with about a half an hour presentation by a PSBA person, and that's followed by kind of a roundtable discussion by other board members in our neighboring areas. It's a Tuesday, and it's in the middle of the day, which can be kind of tough at 12:30, but that's on Zoom, so it's, can be easier to attend that way. We have the Advocacy Day, which for the first time in two years is in person at the Capitol. That starts pretty early, well, like 8 o'clock in the morning. PSBA usually has some talks on their upcoming talking points and platforms, and then an opportunity to meet with our representatives throughout the day. If you can't attend in person, there is a virtual option where they can try to set you up with a virtual meeting with the representatives. And then PSBA has their version of their legal roundup. There's in-person and virtual options. Tues, the virtual option is Tuesday, May 3rd, and there's a variety of in-person options as well. And that's it.
What was the date on the Advocacy Day?
Advocacy Day is Monday, April 25th.
Great, thank you. Great, great report. Thank you. Any new business?
I, I'd just like to offer Mr. Vander Newt, Director Dom and I, we glad to speak with you after the board meeting here to talk about your request. We can go down to my office or somewhere. Yep.
Any other new business?
I'd like to just quickly discuss what, I shouldn't say discuss, but I think it would be important for us as a board and administration. I don't know exactly what we can talk about, but maybe if we can put this as either a discussion item for next month's meeting, or if it would fall under executive session, I'm not sure if it would, but I, I hear what Mr. Vander Newt's saying. I've actually talked to Dr. Messinger about some things about discipline and stuff before myself, so I'd, and working in a public school myself, some of the things that he's discussed, I know where we work, sometimes we think, like, how the heck is this? How are some of these kids given this badge to do whatever they want? And I, you know, I always kind of look at it, well, it must come from the top down, like, maybe the top doesn't feel this is important. So I guess I'd like to kind of gauge what our board feels important. I know, you know, some boards, the school I work at, test scores are very important, you know, National Merit finalists, we have tons of them each year. That, that's what's viewed as important, and then you have the, the old-school teachers like myself that say, well, you know, you have nothing if you don't have discipline. So I, I just kind of would like to get a gauge on our board. You know, what we feel as a board is important to support our administration. You know, personally, I'd like to, I'd like our administrators to know that, that they have, and I don't think this would be just me, but you know, I'd like to see our administrators given the green light to, you know, be able to rule with an iron fist in this school, because, you know, I know discipline, and it's not just at Northern Lebanon, it's everywhere. It's lacking. There's a lack of respect for authority nowadays, you know, just because of what kids see on TV. What I see is riots is called peaceful protests, and, you know, what I see, you know, you see pictures of a war going on, and I've seen pictures of these peaceful protests that look actually worse. So I just think it's important for our school board to be able to be on the same page with our administration, because if it does come from the top down, I think we need to be consistent as a board and, and as a team at 10, actually, and, you know, letting our administrators know what we, you know, what we feel we support them doing in our school. And I'm not saying our, you know, I think we have good administrators, but you're only, you can only do what your bosses allow you to, and the 10 of us are the bosses, so they need to, you know, not that they aren't given support, but I think they just, I'd like to know what we feel is appropriate as far as, you know, do we, do we care about discipline more than we care about academics? Do we care about academics more than extracurriculars? All those things. So I don't know if, if Brooke, is, is that a, if that's something we can discuss publicly next month, I'd be all, I'd love to do it publicly if it's a, if it's a exec session, and it probably doesn't fall under that either, so I don't know.
Well, if it's individual situations, it has to, I mean, if it's involving specific student disciplines, it obviously has to be an exec session. You can't talk about specific student situations.
Right.
I would also remind everyone that we did start a discipline committee for this very reason, to evaluate the handbook, to evaluate the level of consequences, to look at for this very reason, to evaluate the handbook, to evaluate the level of consequences, to look at, just, just to look, you know, we meet tomorrow afternoon, after school actually. And one of the things we're doing is looking at examples of other school district handbooks and, and just having discussions about, you know, the, the, there's a lot of components to this. And I, without, without being in a, in a position to, I don't want to lay blame on any one entity, but there's, there's something I think that a lot of different stakeholders could do differently to help. And yes, this year has been, certainly this year has been worse than I think what we experienced prior to COVID in general in school districts everywhere. I, I know that one particular school district at the middle school, I was speaking to an administrator and they've had 59 fights as of January in their middle school. And kids went from being in school twice a week to being in school five days a week and, and I, it has the mental and emotional trauma, stress, whatever you want to call it. I think has played a factor this year. I know our administrators have done a good job of trying to make sure they are caught up with discipline. You know, ultimately, I think in a situation, you really want to work with these kids. You want to build relationships. You want to talk with them. You want to try to get to the root of the behaviors. A, a, a three-day suspension, frankly, that may be warranted, but I don't know that that by itself changes the behavior. And so it is a, a bigger topic, a bigger discussion than just a handbook change. And that's why I established that committee. And certainly would invite, you know, anyone from the board that wants to attend to, to, you know, be part of that, but and at some point they'll have a recommendation that we would bring to you anyway, but I, I think there's a lot of components and, and it has been, it's been a challenging year with everyone coming back and, and it's not, it hasn't been the normal last couple of years. There's no doubt about it. So.
I think the discipline committee is a great place to start. I know we're doing that at, at my school as well. And there's a lot of, a lot of teachers that are excited about the opportunity to, to be on that. And reviewing the handbook, we feel is probably the first step because a lot of things are already in there that if they were just followed, you know, that, and I'm not saying at Northern Lebanon, I'm saying it at Hershey, it's sometimes we want to reinvent the wheel, but there's a lot of good things in the handbook that if we just followed, you know, that can help. So I know that's what they're looking at is they're just going page through, page through the handbook like this, this needs to come out, or this needs to be reinforced, or this needs to be tweaked. So yeah, I think the discipline committee you're doing is, that's going to be a great first step.
Director Irman, do you have a motion for the board to consider for tonight or just something to keep in front of us going forward?
Oh, I just, I think with Dr. Messinger saying the discipline committee starts tomorrow, I think that's, that's a great start. And I think him offering the invite to us to be a part of it helps. And so I don't know really how, how it would be a motion, but I, I do think we need to kind of let, let it be known, you know, how the 10 of us, what we value.
I, I would recommend, and, and we've, we've actually met a couple of times. Tomorrow's just happens to be the next one. But I would recommend that I, you know, as we have both, because we have two committees running at the same time right now. We have a climate committee also. We're talking a lot about school pride and some approaches there. And then we're talking, and from a discipline standpoint, it's really more of a focus at the secondary level, but I would recommend, you know, as I have, as we have these meetings, just as part of maybe my report to kind of give updates on what we're doing. And, and you know, I, I can tell you now that the very first thing we did in each of the committees was to examine research on the topics. And to take a look at, at research and get a feel for things that the research is saying is our successful approaches. You know, common themes and we're in the process now of establishing goals. You know, and, and we haven't met terribly frequent. I mean, we've, we started in January and we've met monthly, but we do anticipate meeting over the summer and spending maybe some trade day hours and things like that. So but we started with the research. Getting, doing some informal surveying of those on the, on the staff. We actually had a few years ago, a climate committee started. And there were formal surveys done of students of staff, those of you, Stacy shaking her head, those of you who are on the board, maybe remember that. Teachers. So we pulled that out to take a look at that as well and see what those results were. Things have changed a lot in two years. It hasn't been a normal two years worth of, of change. It's been way, you know, out of whack in terms of that, in terms of that. So but you know, we started with that, establishing goals at this point. And from a, from a discipline committee standpoint, the next step is, is let's look at some other samples and models. There were some that people pulled that they really liked, so we'll take a look and see.
Great. Thank you. Any other new business? We just note the dates to remember at the bottom of your agenda. And if there is no other new business, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? I guess we, I guess we want to stay all night. There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.